I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, good evening, everybody. We'll start with the report of the chairman, and I really don't have anything this evening. Oh, I'm sorry, let me go back to that. Next Monday, just as a reminder, we have our Goals and Action Plan meeting here, starting at 6:30. Don't even look, Jerry, you're on a vacation.
I told you.
Well, apparently Jerry's on vacation yet again. Yeah, so next Monday, here, starting at 6:30, we will have a light dinner. And hopefully, we will get through it relatively quickly.
Yeah, we did the five-year Goals and Action Plan, we finished that up at the end of last year, actually the middle of this year, so we have a whole new, Jack has put together a whole new way of looking at it. And so, we're gonna go in groups and work together.
Perfect. And if you can't be here, please let us know, because after tonight, we're gonna put groups together. So, we don't want to short any of the groups in the breakouts with the administrators and Board of Ed working together on the different groups. All right, and Jerry, have a great vacation, where are you going?
Nowhere. Bermuda.
Oh, yes, Bermuda. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, David, second, Jerry, any discussion? John, do you want to talk about some of our appointments?
Yes, we have one resignation, unanticipated resignation, art teacher at Stephanie. She's going to the school that she first student taught in, so she's leaving us. And actually, Jack and I met the candidate today, so I think we have a good replacement. In your packet are four new hires, three of them are Full and Hollow, and one is Monroe Art, because we also had a change, the Monroe Art person came up to the high school for our appointment. So, all great candidates, we've met them, and we feel really confident in what they can do.
Great, thank you, do we have any discussion on any of this? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda? Thank you, motion passes. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons, and Kevin and Will are here. Go for it, you're up.
Just to start off, fellow captain of the volleyball team Tristan McDonough was, I guess, elected Barnum King. And this is the fourth straight year we've had Barnum royalty come out of Masek, so pretty stoked about that. So, congratulate him, if you see him, he's hard to miss. Superintendent Students of the Month were announced on Fri- or going to be announced on Fri- or, sorry. It's going to happen on Friday, and they are Kevin Papsko and Lauren Young. Again, if you see Kevin, hard to miss, he's a giant amongst men, so he's been my friend for a long time. So, congratulate him if you can, same with Lauren. We have a strings concert coming up next Thursday at 7:30 PM. And next Friday marks the midpoint of quarter four, scary to say that. Some kid named Will Santi and Chloe Shawwa were recognized as the cast C I A C Scholar Athletes for Masek last night at the Opera Turf in Sullington. So, again, if you see Will anywhere.
Is he hard to miss also?
No, no, not really. About average height. You see them, congratulate them, and.
So, in the next few weeks, we have AP testing, which is lots of fun for everyone. But afterward, we are pretty much in the home stretch towards the end of the year, which is nice. And for sports seasons, they're all coming to somewhat of a close, we have a lot of senior nights coming up with Lax Lacrosse going on tonight, the girls are up 4-0, we're up 4-0 when I left. Girls Track is next Monday, Boys Volleyball with Kevin and I is next Monday.
And other people.
Yeah, of course. Boys Lacrosse is this Thursday, and then softball and baseball will both be playing Friday at 4:15 for their senior nights. The S W C held a leadership dinner in Danbury last Thursday, and it honored Gino Kaka Bazi, Zach Boyle, Kate Infante, and Ryan Shaw. And for what we believe is the first time this has ever happened, one of the girls in our school, Maddie Winters, who sings at a lot of events, she was made Macy's All-American, or elected to the Macy's All-American Marching Band, which means she will perform as a part of the Thanksgiving parade this year.
And congratulations, Will.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, does anybody else have any committee and liaison reports? Thank you, Jessica.
There was a pension committee meeting on May 2nd, and it was just the first quarter review, and things are doing relatively well, and no major votes, if you want to add anything.
Yeah, we meet four times a year and go over how each of the funds are doing. We're happy to say that the Board of Ed Fund is healthy and doing well for the non-certified pension.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? All right, hearing none, we will move on to public participation, if anybody would like to speak. All right, we will move on then, to report of the superintendent.
A couple of things on the report that I want to just highlight, you know, we are going to have our recognition ceremony on June 7th, and I have heard from two people that they will be there if. You and Shannon, if anybody else is gonna be there.
Water View?
It's at Water View, okay, great. If anybody else is gonna be there, let me know. It's from 5 to 6 is social time, and then after that, Alan too, great, thank you.
Jerry, you away?
No, I won't show up, I will be there.
Jerry, good, thank you.
I go away the 8th.
The 7th.
The 7th.
The 7th, that's 5 o'clock.
Thursday, June 7th, at 5 o'clock, 5 to 6. That's when we do, we recognize our retirees, and there are 16 people, there are 16 staff members that are retiring this year. You also are going to recognize them in the June board meeting here too, so you'll have a chance to do that. We also do Teacher of the Year that day, and we also announce a staff member with years of service. So, it's a really great event, it's nice if you could be there, we really get a good showing, so we're happy about that. Right now, we have posted all our positions, we still have five positions to fill. So, the principals and leaders, instructional leaders are all in various schedules for this. So, we should have everybody hired, you know, there are some really difficult positions that we're interviewing for, and so, that's gonna take a little bit more time, but we really are in good shape. We interviewed today with the police department, Joe, Jack and I, and Officer Carone from the police department, the second armed school security officer, we had five interviews today. We think we have some really good candidates, so we're gonna make a decision tomorrow or not. So, we're all set to go.
Great.
The positive comments from the armed school security officer at Full and Hollow, we've heard so many positive things. We had a PTO meeting, a Parents Council meeting last week, and they were just raving about the relationship that he's built with students and parents already in the short time he's been there. So, this has been a really positive experience for us, so we're looking for the same kind of thing. The second thing on there is insurance, and you know we are always talking about insurance, and we're always thinking about insurance. So, we finally got our final numbers, and it's a 12.7% increase in insurance premiums from last year to this year. Now, that comes off the heels of a 20% increase, so we're getting better, but it's still a large increase. Every union now, except two, because we're in the middle of negotiating them, are up to the $2,500, $5,000, single and family deductible. So, that deductible helps to lower the cost a little bit as we raise the cost of that. Jack and I and Joe are gonna be meeting with the unions this week, Thursday. We have a presentation, we're gonna show them all the numbers, how the numbers are, where they are, just to kind of review all of that. Right now, I talked to Gabby this morning, and we have $851,000 in our medical reserve. Not the 1.2 we want, but certainly much better than it has been. So, we are starting to build that up, and that's good. We have talked about this right now, the cost for a family medical, that the employee and the board share the cost is at $29,000 for a family. As it becomes, as that number goes up, we will have to look at other options, and so, that'll be other things that we're gonna work on, or they're gonna work on next year, is to look at what are the other options. Some other districts have gone to the state plan, we're gonna look at all that, and that's gonna be a discussion with our bargaining units.
Can you explain to us why we haven't looked, or we might have, and they might not accept it, why we haven't gone with a single, a two-person, and a family plan, like a lot of other towns?
Yes, we've talked about that for years, Jerry, for a lot of years. The problem is, starting that will cause the two-person group to have a cost, but it'll either raise the family, or it'll raise the single. Because now, you're going to take the people that are paying the family, and you're gonna drop down their cost to a two-person, so somebody's gotta make up that number. So, what'll happen is, it'll be made up with the single, the two, and then the family. So, we did, we've talked to them a lot about it. It probably, the best time to do that is if we change insurance plans.
Because the way I'm, the way I see it, I don't think they, insurance would want that, because their monies wouldn't be the same.
But they don't really care.
Okay.
They want the money, and how we get it in there, they don't care. But for us, it'll affect our employees, it'll be a windfall for the husband and wife, the two-person.
Right.
But it will cost the family even more.
So, are we looking in the future of changing insurance?
We are, that'll be something that next year is gonna happen, there's gonna be an investigation, along with our bargaining units, to see if that happens. Right now, when we meet with Brown and Brown, they're saying we're still better off being self-insured. But we are right on the cusp with that $29,000. And so, that was the conversation that we had with them, the last time we met with them, and so, that's gonna be something that we look at next year with our bargaining units, and to see about that.
What are other towns doing to deal with this? Because, I mean, health insurance is out of control.
Other towns are doing what we're doing. We just found out that Westport has moved this year from their point of service, they had a point, they didn't have, they weren't self-insured, they moved from their point of service to the state plan. And everybody's saving a little money, the town's saving a little money, because the premiums are lower, and the employees are saving money, because the premiums are lower. So, they're saving money all around. But they were up to something like $34,000 for a family plan. So, they were much higher than we are, but as Brown and Brown said to us, we're starting to get at that point where it's time to look at it again. We looked at it last year, they're still saying at 29, you know, we might be good, but we're getting to the point where we need to look at it. And, you know, we look at the number of claims that we have, and every year, that number has gone up. Large claims, not normal claims, but large claims, and every number that's gone up, every year that's gone up. And we went out to bid this year, stop loss, and remember, stop loss is any claim over $175,000, we have insurance for that, we went out to bid on that, and we did save some money. Brown and Brown really kind of beat up the companies, and we saved some money on that this year. But, you know, our claims are our claims. So, that's really it, I was gonna mention about the goal workshop, Jack's been working pretty hard on that, I don't know if you want to share anything more about what's gonna happen next Monday?
Yeah, the plan is, we'll give everybody an overview of work that's been done to date. The administrative team has been working hard and putting together draft documents, we have something for you to consider and work from. And after that overview, with everybody together, we'll work in small group, as Donna had shared, we'll have a mixture of administrators with board members, so that we can have good dialogue around each goal. And then, after that, a sharing of what everybody's learned within their goal area, and a collective conversation about edits, revisions, that board members might want as we put this document together for finalization and implementation.
Good, thank you.
Great, anybody else have any other questions before we move on? All right, we will move on to our presentations, and we have our Board of Education Professional Development tonight, and our instructional leaders are here to do the instructional models used in Monroe.
I just wanted, before we start, Sheila's here as the K, the workroom coordinator. But a couple of people last week, Jack Ceccholini and Kevin, and I think Jim Stelzel, went to talk to the Parents Club, the Parents Council, about what's happening in the middle school and the high school as far as instructional strategies and where we're going. I have to tell you, the parents were really impressed with the work that's being done. I've said this a million times, and I'll say it again, the best thing that this board did was put these instructional leaders in, who are experts in their area. When you're the high school principal, and you're trying to be an expert in all those areas, you can't, you really can't do it well. But these people here have really taken that role, they understand that, if there's a state test or state objectives, standards, they know it, and they live it, so they can work with our group. So, today, they're going to just talk a little bit about the instructional strategies that are used in our district, and why we think we have a pretty good place for kids to learn. So, we'll get out of the way.
Thank you, John. Kind of took what I was going, a little bit of what I was gonna say about how wonderful it is that we have our K-5 coordinators and our 612 secondary instructional leaders to be able to work together as a team, and also work with our teachers. There are so many strategies that can be used in a classroom, and are used in classrooms on any given day. We are just going to highlight one from the different subject areas at the different levels, just to kind of give you a quick little overview. Starting with elementary readers workshop, students do a lot of reading during the school day in their classrooms, and in the middle of that, they'll stop, and they'll take a jot, they'll jot a note down, something that they want to remember about what they were reading, so that when it's time to turn and talk, and turn to their partner that they're working with to discuss their book, they're all ready with something to share. Teachers will poke around from group to group, and they'll conference with those students, and ask some different questions about what it is that they're reading. And here's a picture of a 4th grade teacher over at Stephanie, reading with two students, you can see a post-it on the page from the work that the students were doing.
One thing that we talk about all the time is purposeful and thoughtful discussion. So, when we're doing small group talk, whether it's at the middle school or the high school, we expect kids in book clubs, or with an article in front of them, to really address a variety of issues within that. We need to teach them how to do that, and this is a strategy that actually came from Teachers College, that we've been using in the middle school this year, and we're gonna do a PD with this, with the high school in the fall going in. And it's three different ways that teachers can teach kids how to be effective in that small group discussion. And the first thing is to do something called a whisper in. And the teacher is outside of the group as they're talking, and they're noticing that maybe a student needs to like, say something, or maybe I could prompt you to ask a question. And so, the teacher literally whispers to that kid, like, why don't you invite one of the quieter members to be part of this discussion? Or, this is a good time to ask a question about this, knowing your kids, knowing that they might need that push, knowing that others, if you know the kid who could really bring out another student into that discussion, that's when you'd use a whisper in. There's another strategy with this called the proficient partner. And that's if the teacher decides to enter the discussion. So, the teacher would enter the discussion very purposefully, and will say explicitly to the students, I'm going to be part of this discussion now, listen to the way that I ask questions, listen to the way that I use the material in front of us to get our partners to speak. And you are very explicit about your instructions, so that they can move forward with your knowledge. This last thing is something called research, decide, and teach. And that's the teacher who stands outside of the small group, listens, and makes a decision about what do I want them to go forward with. And so, they'll maybe listen for a few minutes, and they'll stop the discussion, and they'll say, I noticed X, Y, and Z. Now, as the discussion goes on, I want you to talk about A, B, and C, and how I use your text to do that. And I'm gonna listen for you to do, to accomplish that. So, those are just three things that teachers are doing now, to really push that discussion, instead of just letting kids go with it and letting it happen, really being much more supportive and instructive, even in those small groups. I think we're going to.
Okay, great, so, one of the strategies we use in social studies class is something that's actually used in a lot of different classes as well, so I'm speaking to social studies specifically, but it's used in English and other areas too. And it's called the question formulation technique, it comes from Dan Rothstein, who wrote the book, but it's to the right, make just one change. And it's highlighted as a technique in our Connecticut social studies frameworks. So, we know how much kids love to just sit and take notes about history, as much as you all do, right? So, this is kind of a different approach, to get students to generate their own questions, and then lead them down a path of research. So, step one is the teachers design a learning focus, which is basically, you know, whatever the topic is you're learning about today. They'll give them some kind of impetus, they'll give them maybe a section of a passage from a reading. Maybe it's a quote, maybe it's a picture or a chart, okay? Anything could do, even a song could do, okay? Something that exemplifies what you're teaching about. And the students produce questions, simple, I notice and I wonder. What observations can you make, what questions do you have? Once they have kind of filled that out, they categorize their questions. Are these questions that are what we call Google-able questions, are these, can you find these right away? Are they closed questions, or are they open-ended questions? So, they categorize them, they share them, and then within groups, they kind of improve them. They work to create questions that are very good research questions. So, once they have that set up, they then prioritize, what are the questions that I have now, good ones? What are the ones I'm actually interested in finding out the answers to? And then, step five is the research, and step six is the presentation of our research. And the great thing that I love most about this technique is it puts everybody on an even playing field. Let me show you an example, this is one that Macka Case used in the STEM classroom just today. We were talking about his use of the Emancipation Proclamation, I said, have you ever seen the painting of the first time that Lincoln delivered the Emancipation Proclamation to his cabinet? You might recognize the painting, because it's the cover of Doris Kearns Goodwin, her book Team of Rivals about Abraham Lincoln. And so, the kids can just take a look at an image, you don't have to know anything about the Emancipation Proclamation, or even though that's what you're gonna be studying today, but this was on the board when the kids walked in. They took a few seconds, they said, what observations can you make, what do you notice? What do you wonder? And from there, the research ensued. So, it's kind of a disingenuous way of getting students to dig their own way into research. We give them some kind of stimulus, and they go for it from there. And from there, then, you practice all those quality research skills from the internet and text sources. Any questions? Thank you.
So, in elementary math, it can be complicated for students and for parents, any of you who have children, and you know what it's like now with Common Core, it's a little different than the way I learned, at least myself, when I was a young child, but we try to incorporate the CPA approach. And this was developed by an American psychologist, Jerome Bruner, about 70 years ago. And he looked at these three stages, the concrete stage is the doing stage. It's when children have actual manipatives in their hand, and they might be one of these items here. This is a 10-frame paddle to make groups of 10, and this is called a rec and rec, which comes from the Dutch. In addition to these, there would be counters, and there would be base 10 blocks for understanding of place value, or place value chips, a hundreds chart, fraction strips, and fraction towers, and geo boards, rulers, and clocks, anything kids can put their hands on that's real, that they can really use. This goes to then the pictorial and the representational approach, and that's called the seeing stage. So, you see the red circles, that's an array, and that's an array of five rows of four. That's the part, that's the visual piece, and they can draw a picture, you see the number line below there with the jumps, and that would be an addition problem. You see a bar model, which is to the right of that, the 238, and it gives you the part of 100, what is missing. The picture of the 10-frame, and the number bond above that, the number bond decomposes numbers. So, this is just a place for them to record their thinking. The array model then goes to the area model, when you're breaking apart three-digit numbers to multiply, so the kids can do it by pieces. And the last piece is the abstract, that's the symbolic stage, that's when you're writing equations, that's when you're doing it without pictures, without manipatives. It's a progression, and all new concepts should be taught to children using the concrete piece first. I think as kids get older, and teachers are teaching older students, they put away the toys, or the distractions, or something they might not fully understand the value of, but in my mind, it's extremely beneficial for students to use all concrete materials at the outset of what the new concept is, so that they can manipulate them and use them in a different way. And then, when they get to the middle school, some of those teachers might want to use some concrete materials, but they just might not be available to them, so they move into the visual and the representational stage.
Yeah, very much like the elementary school, when you get to the middle and the high school, they still focus on that pictorial representation, to start teaching more the complex abstract ideas. And you see a lot more use of technology as we get into the middle and high school to show this visual representation. The most popular one in the middle and high school now is the Ti4 graphing calculator, and that's used to show patterns, especially with functions, as students start learning more and more advanced functions, from linear to quadratic, exponential, all the way up to the trig functions, they start seeing patterns, and the patterns stay true as they move forward with the more complex problems. As technology gets better and better, there's now apps that are being developed for the phone or for the laptops, Desmos is one example of it, which, you know, allows you, again, to show this graphing, patterns, but the kids cannot do it right on their phone. So, we're really moving, you know, towards more app-based, and less of, you know, the calculator. But the calculator, at this point, is still used in the majority of the classrooms. In addition to that, we started, you know, getting into Google Forms, which is not much a strategy, as much as we use it for assessment, to then develop strategies as we move forward. This is started this year, in many of the classes, where they're trying to just assess what the students know using a Google Form, and then from that, going to, you know, plan their next lesson. Another thing we're talking about, actually, I was talking, having a conversation with my calculus teacher the other day, and she's having conversations with the tech department about using the 3D printer. Especially when you get into some of these real advanced concepts, where you're taking a function, you're rotating around an axis, and you're cutting it with a plane, and you could explain it all you want on the board, you could possibly find websites that kind of show the two-dimensional of it, but to actually get a 3D printer to develop the shape, pass it around, and have that conversation with the piece in your hand, and this is something I'm encouraging her to pursue as we get into the next school year, because I think it'd be very valuable for those students to really see and hold what they're trying to, you know, derive or integrate at that high level.
Roseanne Houghton, our K-5 science coordinator, is not here, she is a new grandma. So, I told her it was more important for her to be with her daughter and her new grandchild, so I'm gonna share her page. Elementary science is all about kind of showing your thinking, I know you've heard Roseanne say that before. You know, it's really getting students to express what it is they're doing. They have this great ABC strategy for students to think about it. A is your actual, your authentic, show exactly what is being observed. B, make it big, so we can really see what you're thinking about. C, make it colorful and clear, pick colors that really represent what it's supposed to be. And then, details and describe, adding those labels, 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 as you'll hear a lot of that happening in science classrooms on the elementary level, getting students to really show what they're thinking. They'll do this in their notebooks, they'll do it on posters, and then they'll do gallery walks to take a look to see what other people did, have a chance to go back to their notebook, and add extra things that maybe they missed that they saw in somebody else's. So, showing your thinking is a very big strategy in elementary science.
In the middle and high school, we're continuing with those same strategies. What I chose to talk to you about tonight was something we alluded to with the last presentation, trying to get students to work collaboratively, and then share their ideas and make them public. So, one of the teacher goals we've used for the last two years at the middle and high school has been to work with Talk Moves, which is a series of strategies from the Turk Educational Consortium out of Cambridge, that kind of breaks down into these four goals. Basically, looking at, is it an individual student goal, we're trying to get a single student to give more ideas? Are we trying to get students to listen to other students? Are we trying to get students either individually or as a group to deepen their understanding by coming up with more detail, or trying to get students to think about what other people are saying and connect to the outside world? Teachers are given a series of sentence starters for each of those. What is it you're saying, can you explain that in other words? Do you agree or disagree with what this student said? And it's been very successful. Some of the other representations that are up there, there's a model building picture up in the upper right-hand corner from a 6th grade class, where students are building a representation of a body system, and then explaining that to groups in a gallery walk format. In the lower right-hand corner, those are kind of the outputs of first discussions of simulations of the rock cycle, also at middle school. And they came up with, this was not presenting the traditional rock cycle diagram, they came up with this on their own, based on collecting some data and trying to figure out what made that data work, and then explained that to different groups, to ultimately come up with a class model that did look like the traditional rock cycle in a loop, and arrows going everywhere. So, it actually really works to get students to work in inquiry and come up with these ideas on their own.
To become proficient in a language, anyone needs to actually function solely in that language.
Anyone needs to actually function solely in that language as opposed to moving between two languages and translating. So language teachers, as much as possible, try to avoid using English in the classroom. Especially in the earlier levels, that's easier said than done when students literally do not understand the words coming out of your mouth. So how do you do that? One way you can use pictures and another way is the strategy total physical response. It avoids translation and it associates an action. It's not all that different from Simon Says. It associates an action with the vocabulary word. If I say the word dormir and I say it four times, you still don't know what I'm talking about. But if I do this, you know it's sleeping. So it's, you can use it, uh, it's pretty easy to do with verbs, with commands. Um, you can structure simple stories where students are not translating. They're simply following along, making the actions. They make the connection to their brain. And you can follow that up with more, um, complex questions the next day. You come in, you make the, 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 the sign. Students can produce the language that way. It's, it's one way to have a classroom full of the educational term is comprehensible input. Help you understand what I'm saying without using translation. And students, it's fun because they move and they, and, and it makes that kinesthetic connection too.
So you've kinda got a little bit of a feel for what happens in some of our classrooms. Um, as we started off with John saying at the beginning and myself as well. We are so fortunate to have these curriculum specialists working with our teachers and our students. The fact that they also collaborate incredibly well between them. We've got that science and math combination. What's happening in those two classrooms, how can we make it work? We've got the English and the history happening. But we also have it going across those other, and Lisa gets to listen to it all and figure out how she can pull it all in in her world language classes. We are very, very fortunate to have these professionals working with our staff and our, our students because the things that they are doing are getting our students to think and to represent Monroe in an amazing way when they move on to that next step. So I'd like to thank them all for their work that they've done tonight.
Thank you.
And if you have any questions for us?
I guess, all right, Ellen, go ahead.
That was interesting. So it looks like, um, you're doing a lot of visual auditory connections with the kids.
Across all disciplines.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, we will, we have no old business. We will move on to new business, um, which is, uh, 2018, 19 technology support. So Jack, I know you wanna get into this, so go for it.
Yeah, so what we wanted to share with the board is a change that we would like to make is the three tech pairs that we've had in the past are, cost us about $67,000 a year. Roughly the cost of a teaching position, a certified position. The nature of technology instruction has changed a lot in classrooms. If you go back five and six years ago, we had a lab in every single one of our schools. And technology was a place that you went to, to learn. What's happened is all of our labs are gone, other than specialized ones at the high school at this point for things like video. But technology is no longer a place. Technology is something that you use as a means to learn. So what we've been talking about and what we'd like to do is take those tech pair positions, which were really about assisting teachers with the daily implementation. We'd like to make that a certified position where it's much more about how do you use this meaningfully for delivering instruction on an ongoing basis? Our curriculum was designed to be a series of assured experiences, K through 12. You might recall a couple of years ago, I'd shared that with the board. And we have technology assured experiences embedded in every grade level and every content area where it's about that content and how to use the technology to, to help to deliver that. So we see this certified position as being a really good way to assist that work and, and really help to, uh, to just promote the momentum of that work.
So that would be district-wide?
It would be a K-12 position.
Okay. And that's, the certification would cover all?
The interesting thing is in the state of Connecticut, there is no certification for technology. So it would be somebody who's a certified teacher with a strong background in technology.
Okay.
So everybody understands that instead of having the three parataps or paraf, and paras and tech, we're just gonna have one certified position.
And that person will travel?
Correct.
Correct. So it's not any additional money. It's just chang, changing the way we're using that money allocated.
The goal is to have the person at central office so that they can work with Sheila, um, in curriculum. And it'll just help with consistency across the board.
What would this, like, the person's work rate look like? So they'd be housed in central office?
They'd be housed at central office and would really be unit-based and needs-based. You know, if you look at our assured experience, uh, experiences, they, they shift a lot through a calendar. So it might be, for example, right now, grade one is doing a unit where they're going to, uh, town hall for a virtual field trip, uh, actually a real field trip to learn about the geography of Monroe, the purpose of town hall, but, um, and also things like the library. They walk away with a library card. But leading up to that, there's a virtual town map that we've created where students can click on locations and they can learn about the people within those locations. So for example, uh, you click on town hall and up comes a video of Ken Kellogg. And Ken speaks about the purpose of the first election. And he did an awesome job. It's a brand-new video. He said, "Your parents elect a president who oversees the United States. They also elect a governor who oversees the state of Connecticut. They've elected me to oversee the town of Monroe." So students, it's a first grade developmentally appropriate civics lesson delivered virtually that provides good context for this real field trip that comes up. So this person would be assisting with that kind of work throughout the year.
And remember, um, last year, you know, Jim was the superintendent, I was the assistant and Jack was the director of technology. And that, Jack, that role came with Jack when he became the assistant and we cut that position. So Jack assumed that role. Well, next year, as superintendent, it's gonna be more difficult for him to get into the classrooms and to talk about technology and how to integrate that more and to help teachers who have some issues. It's gonna be impossible. Um, so this position will help with that.
So that raises another good question though, I think, is that, you know, as, as you move up, this role is gonna be based more on instructional, right?
Correct.
Okay. So where's that, we then have that gap around technology, direction, vision for the, for the district? And where, where we see that fitting?
Hardware, software, yeah. Quite honestly, I mean, it's one of my passions. I'll continue to be involved. But, uh, you know, for example, Paul, Paul Course being a report to me in the IT department, that will continue that way.
Okay.
So in terms of vision, the administrative team collectively plays an important role in that. It's not, I, I don't make decisions in isolation. We collectively talk about our, our vision and how we're meeting that vision each day.
And so Paul will take that hardware, software, that.
Right. Switches and servers is Paul's thing.
And then this person with Jack's support will be more the educational technology.
Okay.
So for those that aren't sure, can you just quickly explain what the three tech pairs do right now?
Well, they were caught.
Right, right. I meant what they, what they did.
Right. What they've done in the past is they've assisted the library media specialist with instruction. Here too, this, this curriculum's been revamped. We look at the K-1, 2 as being direct instruction on technology. Students at that age don't know anything. They don't know the point and click really well. They don't know the initial, uh, cut, copy and paste, those sorts of things. But after that, grade three, four, five, it's in classrooms. We're, we're basically one-to-one in grades three, four, five. There's just about one Chromebook for every third, fourth and fifth grade student. So they're using that device in a classroom every day, independent of a tech pair delivering something once a week. There's a lot more coming from classroom instruction and using that technology. And that's why this shift is really a logical one at this point in time, because the technology's being used every day.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any other questions for Jack on this? David?
Jack, would this person being, be in the classroom at all? Be able to get, get out of CO and then get into the classroom as well?
Really, the intent of this position, even though it's housed in central office, is to get into classrooms. And to, to provide a really important feedback loop. I mean, to John's point, i- it's getting more challenging for me to be that feedback loop. So working with teachers and identifying the instructional challenges that they have with technology, providing that feedback to what do we need to do next? To keep technology relevant and meaningful in classrooms and problem-solving around those kinds of things. And that can only happen by being in classrooms and talking with teachers on an ongoing basis.
District-wide?
District-wide, K-12.
It has zero budget impact, so it doesn't sense, yeah.
It's just a shift on how we're using the funds. So instead of hiring the three paras, we would be hiring just one certified staff member. Anybody else? All right. Um, that is, takes us to the end of the agenda unless somebody has something else they'd like to bring up.
You don't need to vote on that, just, I know, our awareness.
Right.
Right.
You know, if you had concerns, we, we'll try to address this.
All right, hearing nothing else, uh, so I have a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Christine, second jury. All right. Uh, any discussion? Nope. Hearing none, all in favor? Great, thank you. Motion passes. We are adjourned for the evening.